You are all set to open your meetings.
Okay, you wanna go?
I'll begin, Patrick.
Sure, if you'd like to, go ahead.
All right, that's fine, thank you. My name is Fred Chase, I'm a member of the Community and Economic Development Committee of the Town Council. And I'm here to open the committees meeting on the two public hearing matters that are before the joint session this evening. Today is May 25th, 2022. I note that a quorum exists for the committee. Councillor Bill Wood is present, as am I, and I think we will be joined in a short while by our third member, Councillor Peter Columbodas. So our meeting is now open.
All right, so being 6:30 on Wednesday, May 25th, 2022, and have a quorum, I'll open the Bridgewater Planning Board meeting for this evening. This evening, we do have a couple of public hearings. Let me just grab the remote meeting instructions that we have to read in. So the town manager is still asking us to meet through Zoom. There's no in-pressing attendance to the members of the public at this time, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time. The meeting is being recorded within 48 hours, we will post the link of the recording on the town's website and our social media pages. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely, I'm Patrick Driscoll, the Chair, Mr. Raymond Ajemian, Mrs. Aspeth Rojas, Mr. Michael McDonald, the Vice Chair, and Mr. Stephen Gallagher. During the meeting, all votes will be taken as roll calls. The following Bridgewater Town staff will also be participating remotely. All those people are gone. Mrs. Jennifer DeBoerbrin, the Community Economic Development Director, Mr. Shane O'Brien, the Town Planner. And I believe that Mr. Tanji is not with us this evening, correct, Mrs. DeBoerbrin?
That's correct.
At this point, everybody's mic is muted, the board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting. And as items appear on the agenda, projects represented, mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing, which we allow, which we have two of them this evening, they allow for public comment. We ask to use the chat feature to ask you a question by listing your name and address and your question. The host, who is Mrs. DeBoerbrin, will recognize all questions in order. You can use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu, you'll be unmuted when the host, Mrs. DeBoerbrin, recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand and be recognized. We have to, we don't have to read that anymore. All right, so this evening, we do have a first public hearing, it's the joint meeting with the town of Bridgewater Community Economic Development Committee for referral proposed Bridgewater zoning bylaw amendment, adult retirement community in the planned development district, D F Y 22022. So I'll open that public hearing, Mr. Chase, do you want to open your public hearing?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I will open the public hearing meeting of the Community and Economic Development Committee. Thank you.
So, thank you, committee and planning board.
Mrs. DeBoerbrin, we did post a legal notice on 5/11.
We did, I believe that was sent to the planning board, I believe a copy of the notice was sent to the planning board.
Do we want to read that into record, just note, just for the record?
I think, given what I'm about to say, we can just note it for the record. So yesterday, we did receive an email from the councillor, councillor Eric Moore, who is the councillor sponsoring the zoning ordinance. And he has indicated that he is willing, wishing to withdraw this ordinance at this time, as it is presented to you, and work on potentially some changes to the ordinance and some additional language changes. So he would like you to take no action and refer it back to the council with no action, so he can withdraw it at their next meeting on June 7th. So I would just ask that both parties take no action and refer it back to the council.
Thank you, on behalf of the Community and Economic Development Committee, I would entertain a motion to take no action on the petition this evening and to return the matter to the Town Council for amendment.
Mr. Wood, you're muted.
That's right, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. And all in favor, Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, thank you.
On the planning board side, do we have a motion?
Motion to take no action, refer the ordinance back to the council.
I'll second that motion.
For a motion by Mr. Ajemian, second by Mr. McDonald, are there any discussion? Okay, I'll take the vote, Ms. Rojas?
I vote yes, to return it to the council.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Ajemian?
Yes.
I mean, yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, so next, on the planning board side, I'll open the joint meeting with the town of Bridgewater Community Economic Development Committee for referral of proposed Bridgewater zoning map amendment, which is Main Street, D Y, D F Y 24022. Mr. Chase, do you want to open that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll open the meeting for the Community and Economic Development Committee for the matter, F Y 22-024. And we are now open.
Great, thank you, committee and planning board again. I'll just give a brief sort of where we are, what this is, what this is involving, and then I'm going to turn it over, I think, to the proponent to provide any additional information and then answer any questions you may have. As you may recall, I believe it was last year, a similar ordinance was presented to you at the time to change the zoning map for one parcel on Main Street, 96 Main Street, to all essential business districts zoning. At the time, there was a lot of discussion about what that looked like and how that would come about and what that meant for the community. And what we got out of that is the town wanted us to look at sort of a bigger picture of the area and how it impacted other lots in the area. So the proponent went back and did some work on their end and talked to their neighbors and got some agreement on all sides of them and extended the proposal out to, I believe it's five different property owners, to amend the map to include all of those into the central business district. So that's where we're at now, this is a new ordinance, that last ordinance, I believe, never, I think it's still in committee at the C E B C. I don't believe that everyone back to the full council, so there's no two-year waiting period at this point. So they are allowed to come back before you. So attorney Don Nagel is representing the proponent of 96 Main Street, so I'll turn it over to him if he has any, I think he'd like to add or to answer any questions. You're muted, you've got to unmute yourself, Mr. Nagel.
Thank you, Jennifer, again, my name is Donald Nagel, I represent Marvin Real Estate Development LLC at, on Main Street, at the, I'm sorry, 96 Main Street in Bridgewater. And like the proposal referenced by Jennifer, the situation is where my client's property, oh yeah, thanks for putting that up. My client's property is right there, I don't know if you can see my, yeah, there it is, that's my client's property, as you can see, it's split by, the zoning district is split. The front of it pointing towards Main Street is the central business district and the back of the lot is residential. And that's the case for these other parcels as well. And what I have proposed is to enlarge the CBD district consistent with that yellow dotted line. And what that will do is put those affected properties, including, and principally my client's property, fully within the CBD zoning district, which allows for development of the property that would otherwise be prevented by the back of the property being in the residential district. And specifically, the problem my client encountered was that no parking was allowed in the in the residential part of the property. And the other provisions of the zoning bylaw requires a certain amount of parking spaces for units. And, you know, this particular proposal is to, for a 5,000 square foot, three-story commercial building, a first floor will be commercial and second and third floors would be residential. So the proposal is to put, to allow parking in the back. And you can't do that because the back of the lot is in residential. So that's the underlying basis for, or reason for the requested zoning change. And I note that a similar change, proposed change was made with regard to a fairly large parcel. I think that was referenced by Jennifer. And I don't know whether that had gone out of, back to the town council or not. But I know that it was endorsed by this joint committee, I think I attended, to educate myself about how this process worked. So, so here I am, basically proposing the same thing that was proposed previously. You know, some of the lot, you know, in parts of town, there are lots that are similarly split. So what I did was, instead of making a hodgepodge of, you know, boundaries, what I did is looked at what other parcels were, would be, would be affected and drew the line accordingly, so that it kind of made sense from an overall zoning point of view. And I contacted the neighbors and they're all supporting this and, you know, would in fact benefit from it as well. So that's, that's it, for pretty much, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to address them.
I have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Jennifer.
Just, could you, attorney, could you just clarify why you drew the lines the way they did, especially with that bump out?
Are you, are you talking about the notch? Yeah, that's the shape, that's the shape of lot number 12, to be exact.
It just follows a property line, is that correct?
Yeah, follows a property line, yeah.
And that's true across all the different properties, correct?
That is correct, those are property lines, the fat yellow lines.
Yeah. This is great, because this is exactly what I was looking for last year when we talked about this. The lines follow the property lines and it's essentially a straight line behind.
Keeps it clean. Do we have any kind of a document of testing that the other property owners have agreed to this proposal? Or you're not giving their consent to this?
Yeah, I have, I have, I sent out certified letters to everybody. And some recipients signed the letter and returned it to me. Others, you know, it was a back and forth, trying to understand really what I was trying to do and how it might affect them. And some sent an email back to indicate their dissent. And so I have those in my file and I'd be happy to provide them if requested.
Yeah, I would, that would make that request, absolutely.
Sure, I'd be happy to provide them to the Jennifer, if that's what you'd like me to do.
So a question to Jennifer and Mr. O'Brien. So the last time this came before us, I think that black line is a 200-foot offset line, which is how we, how we do zoning throughout the town typically, is a little offset line, we've had a few changes where we follow lot lines. But I think last time, when I, when this came before us, and the reason I voted against it was that one, lot lines change over time. Two, that we have, we have a provision, and I think Mr. Nagels incorrect, Attorney Nagels incorrect, and the talking can't be behind the existing building. We have a provision for split lots in our zoning already that allows for a 30-foot incursion into the, into the abutting district. And the third thing is, is that Main Street and Broad Street are very different. So personally, I wouldn't want to see like the, a big building square box that was proposed on, on Broad Street in the Main Street area. Just because that Main Street area, there are residential homes, it is a residential character, most of the buildings are only two and a half stories high. And that's, you know, the mixed use, I would hope, would blend in and be, be close to the street. So, in my opinion, that 200-foot offset line actually acts as a control in terms of the massing of the buildings and keeps it in line with the adjacent properties. So is it correct, and is it correct to assume that these buildings could get much larger based on the movement of that line? And is that a good thing for the district or not?
I think, without having studied all of the buildings, that's a hard question to answer. I don't know what they look, I mean, I know the far one at the top here is the Salvation Army building, so, I mean, that could probably go up, I don't know that it could go out anymore.
I guess, I guess my question is, is it safe to assume there's no building there, they removed the, they removed this house? They can have a much larger building there, if this line moves back, that's correct?
Than the existing house?
No, than what they could build for a building there now.
Well, they, they can't, the only thing, they can't do a, a commercial building, they're, they're hamstrung because they can't put a parking lot in the residential district, they've already, that's already been determined by the building commissioner.
Correct, with the size.
Parking would not work there.
Because of the size of the building they're proposing, correct?
No, no matter what size building they would put there, they can't, because of the shape of the lot, the parking and infrastructure would have to be in the residential D district.
Right, so you, so you have that black line, they can go 30 feet beyond that. We have a zero, a zero setback line on Main Street, they have 230 feet to put a building in packing. Why couldn't they put a smaller building with packing on the back?
Well, I'm not an engineer, so I don't, I can't answer that question, but I, I do know that the plan.
Let's do it, let's say, let's, let's say they had an eight-foot wide building, right? They'd have 150 feet in the back for packing.
Well, there's no dimensions on this plan, so I don't know.
Well, it's, it's the setback line, the offset line is 200 feet. That black line, the way we do zoning on Main Street, is it's 200 feet from the, from the edge of the roadway.
Okay.
So they would have 200 feet back plus 30, because we provide for that already in zoning. So, so my point is, is that there's a control. They can do what they want to do, it's just, if they want to do a 5,000 square foot building, which would be 15,000 square feet if you did three stories, that's, that's when you need substantial packing in the back. It's because of the size of the building. So my concern is, and was last time, is that Main Street is very different than Broad Street. And across the street, you have residential houses, you have, you know, one, two-story office buildings. I'm just afraid in terms of scale that things could get out of whack if we move that line back, because it'll allow for bigger buildings.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly, is what you're saying, Pat, that like right now, they could, or, I'm sorry, if the change was approved, they could essentially put a building in that entire, that entire black lined area, you know, on their side of the street, and then just have a massive, massive parking lot in the back, is that? I'm just trying to.
Right now, see that, the general line has to propose one of the black line. That black line is 200, that black line is a 200-foot zoning offset line on Main Street?
Yeah.
This is the dotted black line.
Yeah.
And their project can go 30 feet beyond that into residential D now. So the reason I like it is it gives more of a buffer to the residential D neighborhood. It controls the size of the building. It pushes the building up front, where we want street, you know, pedestrian access. And it just, the, it just, if you move that line back, it's just going to allow for much bigger buildings. So if we want much bigger buildings on Main Street, we should support it. If we want to control, I'll keep buildings even more in keeping with that district, then we'd want to leave the line where it is, in my opinion.
Yeah, if I could, if I could chime in on this. I don't know what the, I don't have even the trap plans for the building. But as I recall, the back of the building is pretty close to that existing black line. I don't recall offhand what the front lot setback is. But the, you know, to redevelop that property for a lot of uses in the CBD district is going to require parking in the back. And so they tried a lot of different variations and they, and they couldn't do it. Certainly, assuming that to do this requires a special permit, I would think the concerns that you're raising may be appropriate to be brought up in the special, you know, be, in a special permit context, rather than a zoning change. The fact that I think is presented here is that, you know, along this stretch of the road, the, these lots are split in half, which prevents, you know, the kind of thing that we're trying to do. So, and I know that there's, you know, there are other parcels that already do have parking in the back. I don't know whether that was as a result of a variance or not. But, and there's also a very large building, you know, the Salvation Army building. But I think that to not allow that, you know, we did pursue the idea of a variance and that was discouraged, and so that's where, that's why we're here. To try to get some relief that would make that zoning district more useful along Main Street for this, for at least this part of town.
I guess I have, I have one statement and one question there. So I mean, ultimately, we can't consider any theoretical proposed project that is not before us, we are considering the zoning change, not, not in a favorable project that might not occur, regardless of whether this change is approved or not. I guess, I guess my, my question would be, why was the, why was the variant, why was seeking a variance discouraged?
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I don't have discouraged as the right word, I think we typically remind people of the test that the zoning water appeals has to apply to issuance of variances. And one of those things that they have to consider is what is the hardship that requires you to be granted a variance. I believe in, in this case, there is no hardship that deals with soil, topography, or, or, or the land itself. The, it would be self-imposed by wanting to do the,
Right.
the, the, what do you call it, the project.
Maximizing the use of the.
Right, so, so I mean, they're more than welcome to apply for a variance, it's just.
But there's no real basis for them to get it.
Very hard standard to me.
It is a high hurdle to get it.
I guess, I guess when I look at it, I try to simplify it, I say, it is cleaner, but the question, but, but that black line is somewhat of a control right now, where we don't have sub-districts downtown. And if you look, if you look to the building headed towards West Bridgewater next to this building, that's the Eastern Bank Building, it's setback a good distance off the road, there's packing in the back. And that looks like it almost complies with zoning, because it doesn't go too far into the next zone. So that would be the type of building, a little bigger than that, that they, that they could build on this site. And I think, and I just want to, I'm just trying to make sure I understand and everybody else understands, we'd move the line back, which we can, it's just, do you want bigger buildings that could potentially be out of scale on Main Street? What do you want to, well, that's a control, that, that you have to have smaller buildings and, and figure packing behind it. So, it's, they have 230 feet roughly.
Yeah, I'm kind of torn on that one, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was, I'm kind of torn on this one, because I, I think it is a decent change to the zoning. And I don't necessarily oppose it, but I also share Pat's concern about, yeah, out of scale buildings, which would be enabled by the change. Is, is there any? I, I feel like there probably isn't, because that seems kind of messy. But is there anyone to keep the setback while changing the zoning in the back, so they can still keep the parking in the back if they had to, or is that not, not a possibility?
Say that again.
Could you, could you keep the setback but allow parking in the back with the, like some kind of split zoning change, like a condition?
So in order that, you just have to change the use of residential D to allow parking in residential D, which I'm not sure that we want to do across the board.
Yeah, that'd be horrible.
And I just, before, before I get to Mr. Chase's hand raised for a while, I just want to remind the, everybody, the planning board and everybody, that, you know, we have the zoning re-codification on its way back to the council for hopefully adoption relatively soon. And in that document, there's several, you know, standards for special permits and site plans and for large-scale projects, that the planning board will have additional teeth and additional things to hang their hat on in order to sort of control the size of these developments in the future, where they didn't have those things previously in the past. So I just wanted to keep, remind everybody of that, so, Mr. Chase?
Well, thank you, Jennifer, I just had a question with respect to the, the yellow line, the wetlands demarcation line. I don't know if that's really a wetlands delineation or not, it says approximate. But my question is this. I think that, I think that under conservation regulations, there would be a, either a 100 or a 200-foot setback from that line, within which development would be prohibited. I'm certainly not sure of the particulars on that, but my point is, if, if that is the case, would not that setback, whichever figure it is, 100 or 200 feet, would it not provide a de facto limitation on the ability of the developer to extend parking that far back and therefore also limit the ultimate size of the building in the front?
So just to clarify, the, the wetlands is this like swiggly line right here? And it's, I don't believe it's been delineated, because it says that it's per Mass GIS Oliver, which is the Mass GIS system, which isn't, you know, 100% accurate, you can use it sort of as an estimation. It would be a 100-foot offset from the edge of the wetlands would be the, the buffer zone. And their property is over here, so the wetlands are not on their property, so it would be 100 feet off this to their property. Again, there's no dimensions on this map. I think that, you know, if anything, it would come, you know, just sort of slightly over here, if I'm sort of estimating. But, I, I mean, there would still be some conservation, they'd have to probably go through some approvals.
Mrs. DeBoerbrin, just to clarify, we have a 100-foot file, it's a 25-foot setback.
No touch, 25-foot no touch.
They, they have to file within 100 feet, but they can work right up to 25 feet, so that lot wouldn't be affected at all. As far as, maybe with filing, but not as, not as far as.
Well, they have to file and get permission to work within the buffer zone, that's not a guarantee that they can work within the buffer zone. There's an automatic 25 no-touch within our local bylaw. And then they have to file with the Conservation Commission and get permission to work within the buffer zone. I mean, it's likely that, you know, if they're within the 100. I mean, it's likely that, you know, if they're within the hundred, between a hundred and fifty, they'll most likely get approval to work. If they're between a hundred, I mean, fifty and twenty five, it gets a little bit more tricky with this conservation commission.
And we'd have to actually find the wetlands before we.
Yes, you would.
I I think it's, I think Mr. Chase raised a fair point, but uh, that that's a point that, wh- what I consider a zoning change like this, I consider like how I would apply it elsewhere in the town. So I don't believe that, like, looking at this parcel and being like, okay, well, there's wetland here, so that would mitigate the impact. This is only changing this one specific parcel. I don't, I don't, I don't think I can really consider that because you, you you do set it de facto, if not, as you're a precedent with any kind of zoning change like this. So I'd be a little concerned about using that as a mitigating factor in this case.
Mr. Wood, did you have something you wanted to add?
Uh, thank you. So I, you know, I'm listening to Pat's comments, but I'm looking across the the Main Street area. I'm looking at the credit union, which is clearly in violation of that thirty feet. I'm looking at um Kevin Perry's building, which is violation of thirty feet. I'm looking at the church, which is in violation of that thirty feet. Looking at Coin's office on on Union Street, which probably wasn't even in the business zone um as it, as it was. And then I'm looking at the dimensions of the, of the parcels themselves. And so this building that the proponent is asking about was built in, uh, I think it was, it's an old building. So, so they're gonna replace it with, you know, exactly what we ask for in the central business district, which is first floor business and then residential above. And it sounds like it's gonna be three stories or so. The other businesses, Salvation Army, the uh, the Eastern Bank, I think there's uh one other piece in there. Um, you know, they haven't gone anywhere in decades. I don't see them like, oh, suddenly we've got this extra room. Let's, let's rebuild something. So I'm not concerned about that. I was concerned when we first brought this up that the, you know, the the person requesting to put a building here was told no, because you don't have enough, um, you don't have enough business zoning or CBD zoning. And that's what we're fixing here. We're fixing it for these other parcels. I'm looking at the parking, I think, for the Eastern Bank. And that probably exceeds thirty feet too. So, so I I I would like to see this straightened out. And then the lines, the the sidelines aren't gonna change. And then it's special permit to control, you know, what gets placed on the, on the lot if something changes in the future.
Mrs. Deboeberry had made a comment uh about, you know, how we're doing the zoning recodification. And, you know, that would give us additional teeth, as she said, uh with the special permitting process. But assuming we approve or recommend this uh this zoning change, um. And the applicant submits the project that they wanna build here before the zoning recodification. Would they fall under the old regs or the new regs if they go to them before?
So if they submit before that gets adopted, obviously they, they fall into the old regs. But the way, so you've already recommended the zoning recodification. That's headed back to the council if everything goes well on June seventh. Um, which is probably if this gets voted tonight, when this will get back to the council as well. So um, they actually will probably get approved exactly at the same time. If if those things were to fall in blind. That's sort of the trajectory that we're, we're seeing at the moment.
Right, uh, which is probably the most likely scenario. I don't know what's one I'd, I'd stake my hand on though.
I would just, I mean, I, I, I guess it's all on how the building's done. So if it's three stories and it's tastefully, I mean, I, I just don't wanna see a big, you know, block blocks on Main Street. So as, as long as we have controls and we can have, you know, on on Main Street, I'd expect to see, I know a colonial looking building with a, with a, with a either hip roof or a, like a leg on the building now or and it, you know, a peaked roof, just tastefully done to blend in with that New England residential character coming into the town. Uh, we do have residences right behind it, some residences across the street. So if, if we do change the line, I would just hope that we could make sure that that building looks like it belongs there. And and, you know, the the nice thing is, is the five thousand square feet on the first floor commercial, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think the tricky part is we, we can't, I don't think we can really, when we're looking at this, we can't really consider like what might be proposed there. Assuming this passes, we have to just consider the zoning change as the zoning change itself, regardless of any potential proposed projects.
I mean, technically, that's correct, but you've got a, an applicant or a proponent here telling you what it's intended. So, I mean, you can use your, I suppose, best judgment. Do you wanna open it up to the public for comment or do you, is there any additional questions from either the planning board or the C E B C at this time?
My only question was what the public thought about it. I know that uh the attorney reached out to the other, the impacted neighboring houses. Uh, but I I would like to know what the community across the street. If anyone is here today.
Yeah, and also coming off of Mrs. Ross's point, I'd also make note that I, I would not be comfortable voting on this until we have, as a board, received confirmation that, you know, the other parcel, all the parcel owners are in uh agreement with this proposed change.
You want to open it up to the public, Mr. Chase, Mr. Drisco?
Uh, I would be amenable to opening for public comment, uh, if that's something that uh the chairman would also agree.
So I have one last comment before we get there.
Sure.
If we get through this process and everyone agrees and, and we just um think about this, and I'm not sure, sure who was asking for the documentation. But can that just be forwarded to the council as opposed to what? Uh, you know, think about that, kid. Because it sounds like, you know, the attorney has all the documentation that says he talked to the neighbors. I'm gonna trust him with his word. We can, we can say, look at that at the council, just, just uh, just so we can move forward on this.
No, I mean, personally, I wouldn't be comfortable with that. I mean, I, I also don't, I have no doubt that Mr. Nagel is telling the truth. But just as a matter of procedure, I, I would like to see them myself before I accept them as factual. Oh, there, there should be no great rush on this either, you know, that's the, this property is, this, this land is not going anywhere anytime soon, so.
So this process, this, you know, the development of this property has been delayed for several months, you know, since last, end of last year. Uh, leading up to this, you know, we already were at the town council and, and this is really it. So, yeah, I mean, you know, my client wants to develop this property last year. Um, and um, so we're kind of on this, on this track. And I would, I would echo the comment that, you know, uh, I'll forward the documents that um demonstrate the neighbors' ascent to this uh i- i- right away. But I I I'd really be very pained to know that uh if, if we'd have to go through another meeting after those documents were submitted. Um, I, I, you know, I think, you know, the request is made, I'll submit them. Uh, but I don't think we need to delay this going on to um the town council meeting on June seventh. Uh, I can get those to you, you know, by tomorrow morning at the latest.
I suppose I could, yeah, I suppose I'd be okay with that.
Uh, we could always make a, if if it was a favorable recommendation, we could always make it, you know, you know, we could always put in our letter, assuming that, you know, it was, our, our vote was
Right.
assumption that, that, you know, the green cards would be provided as evidence or something like that, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be okay with that. That's, that sounds good.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I, that's probably true. I, I just, in general, I really don't like when the developer tells us that we have to rush this for a particular reason. We should take the time that we need to examine and make a decision. So, I mean, uh, that may work fine. I'm just saying, in theory, in general, I, I take some umbrage at being told that they're, they're, they're in a rush.
I, I could race on that, exactly.
It's not gonna be a rush because there's gonna be a, about a three month delay after they request because the demolition variance, demolition law is gonna come into effect. So it's, it's gonna take some time before this project sees uh.
That wasn't my point, Mr. Wood.
I understand.
Okay, so for a public comment, we have Janet's iPad with her hand raised.
Hi, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. Um, I don't live in that area. Um, but I live in town and drive by there. But I, I agree with Mr. Drisco on, I would have concern of, I know what he's saying, that if you allow that um change, um, yes, they may still have controls on what they can put in there and stuff. But when you allow that, you lose some of that control because the argument is, well, it's allowed, you know, the, you can put something of that size. I mean, you still have to go through all the regulations, but it does take away a little bit more um control. And also, when, you know, you were talking about, you'd like to know if everybody is um that's in the surrounding area is for it. You should be presenting it to um let the public know and and be in your meetings as to who, who it is. You know, if there is any objection, um, you know, if I lived in that area, I prob- I might have an objection. But um, I just wanted to show my support for um not changing it for the reasons that Mr. Drisco was, is saying. And also having it presented to why, you know, who wants, wants it, you know, who supports it? So, and I'd like to keep that area. Um, I know it's businesses, but it's also, uh, you wanna keep the housing and everything. Uh, his, uh, what do I want, colonial? But I just wanted to show my support, even though I don't live in the area, it shouldn't matter in sense because I live in town. But thank you for your time.
Uh, Merrily Kenny Hunt?
Thank you. Um, a little bit along the same lines of what Mrs. Hanson had to say. I walk that street uh twice every, every day of the work week. And as far as I'm concerned, many of the houses that have become businesses there have done it excellently. The um Eastern Bank that's there did a great job restoring a beautiful historic house and making it look lovely and fit into the neighborhood. Um, the same thing for what's next door to it, which I'm not sure what's, I think there's a design company in there now. It used to be a doctor's office and various things. Um, one of the things, one of the worst things I think that has happened on Main Street is the Salvation Army. And it isn't that I have anything against the Salvation Army. It just doesn't fit in. It doesn't look nice. It isn't a great presentation. Every morning when I walk by, I think people know I pick up trash on my way to work. There's always trash thrown around there. It isn't well taken care of. And that is a, a factor of their parking being in front, I think. They have a small area in back where they drop off clothes and stuff. But um, I, I really would think this affects the look and the feel of our Main Street. And uh, not, not to the better if we're gonna be putting up a large housing development in there. Even if it has retail on the first floor, I don't know what it's going to be, but I can't envision how it's going to look like the rest of Main Street in that area, with the exception of the Salvation Army, which doesn't look like the rest of Main Street in that area. That's it. Thanks.
And Melissa Raymondetta?
Hi, good evening, Melissa Raymondetta, um, three seventeen Lakeside Drive, Bridgewater. I um, also, I don't live in the neighborhood that is being discussed this evening, but do live in the town and, 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 you know, I'm in these areas quite often. And I think what I'm concerned about here is precedent with um you know, increasing the size of the district for the purpose of parking. Um, we're very lucky to have a charming um center of town that um is a real pleasure to do business in, to drive through, to walk through. And my concern is that this type of arrangement would be made um in an ongoing fashion. And I think it brings up a larger issue about bringing business to town. Um, but finding ways for uh parking to um uh, to be present. And, you know, if you look at towns around the state, um, this has been successfully done with on-street parking or meters or um, in some case, there are town garages and town lots. And I guess I'm wondering if there's a larger issue here for the future for the town with regard to parking as a whole to pr- to preserve this very beautiful uh center of town that we're very lucky to have. So those are my comments. Thank you.
So I don't see anybody else that they're hand raised. I don't have the chat available. Shane, do you have the chat available? Is there anybody in the chat?
Uh, I don't see anyone in the chat that has their hand raised or asking to make a comment.
Can I ask a question for staff, if possible?
Of course.
Um, so parcel eleven, which I believe is Dr. Coin's office.
I saw, oh, this back here that's outside of the proposed change?
Yeah, it's a parcel, the, the, so parcel eleven is residential. That's the, I believe, Snow Lodge. If you pull that up, that's a really nice residential house with a pool in the backyard. I mean, they assume that to the right of that pool, that that's residential D right now. I mean, I know there's a little bit of parking, but but Dr. Coin's office right now is pre-existing non-conforming. So any change to that in parking change, they can only, I believe they can only expand parking to meet the minimum, to meet the parking requirements. That could potentially be a huge change for the backyard of eleven, if that could be developed. So my question is, is right now, parcel eleven thinks that they're back out to the right of them is residential D and would require variances and and whatnot to, to develop that. Has any, have we, as part of this reach out, has anybody talked to parcel eleven, the owners of the Snow Lodge there? And, and should we almost, I know we're trying to follow lot lines, but should we should we take the, the bump out of that to, to give a little bit of protection to the residents of that? That's a very, very nice home. I mean, that, uh, that can be a commercial building right in the back there now because.
I can answer that a procedural question. We as a town do not notify anyone because under state law, we're not required to notify anyone for a zoning change. And we don't do that. So we did not notify them, whether or not the proponent notified them as a courtesy. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with Pat on that one. Uh, yeah, that would be, that could be a very ugly situation if, if that line stays as it is. And I, I respect trying to follow the lot lines. It's a very clean way to do it. But in this case, I think it would result in a worse outcome. I, I would myself be more favorable if that line was just connected straight across without the, with the bump out there.
It's still come thirty feet over, right? So I'm ju- I'm just trying to figure out, right now, you have twelve is pre-existing non-conforming commercial on residential.
Yeah, Pat, does that line follow the boundary of twelve?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if it's conforming, they could use the whole lot for, for business right now.
Now, like, well, to expand it, they have to get a variance, right, or a special permit, correct?
Yes.
But to do CBD, that has to get a special permit and for certain uses, for certain uses. See, we're, we're just thinking mixed use, Mr. Wood. It could be any allowed use in CBD, so as of right.
I'm, I'm thinking like the Bogart situation where they decide to put a restaurant in there and, and just build up a couple apartments on top. It's a non-conforming building, the planning board wins the plans.
Right, but my concern is, let's say that they wanted to double the size of that dental building now.
Right.
We're talking all the way out back. They could do that now if we changed it to CBD without a special permit because we allow that as of right.
So, so Mr. Chair, if we were to move, if we were to move, if we were to, to consider moving forward on that, would, could we consider taking what, twelve out of that and just change the line to go around thirteen, fourteen, one, two, three, four?
I'll remind the planning board that your, your mission is to just recommend what's in front of you this evening or not recommending what's in front of you this evening. The planning board. recommend what's in front of you this evening or not recommend to you what's in front of you this evening. The planning board can't make changes to zoning ordinances presented to them.
I mean, we can add commentary to a recommendation or a non-recommendation, though can we not?
You can make comments as to why you did not recommend something.
Yeah, I would consider that most.
I think it'd be nice to have twelve properties on, but at the same time in a bunch of residents, trying to make sure that we protect that resident at number eleven.
Well, I I think I think it falls back to what Jennifer just said. I mean, this is what they're proposing. We can't say that we want to make that line go straight across, and we really can't say that we may go forward if you take twelve out of this. So um.
Well, I mean, we we kind of could say that though, because we could deny it and then say this is the reason, and if they came back with this change, then, you know, we'd be more favorable to it. We could do that.
Let's let's put it this way, right? Because we're all just thinking mixed use here, okay? So if if number twelve, which is a low-impact quiet dental office wanted to become an auto dealer. I believe they could do that as of right, right next to that residential house, correct, Mrs. DeBoeran?
I could check the use table too.
So so let's let's talk about what uses could be next to that residential house, uh, because we're just thinking mixed use, right? We're thinking an office.
Yeah, I I certainly don't grant that the the
So the sale or rental is a special permit in Central Business District.
So what 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 uses are allowed on in CBD?
By right? Or by special permit?
Both.
Uh, so multifamily dwellings is a special permit, renting of rooms is a special permit. Conversion to live-work units is a special permit. Licenseed spend breakfast is a special permit.
Do you want me to bring it on the screen? I'll share I'll share my screen.
Yeah, because I think a gas station there, right?
With a special.
But that may be, but that may, well, I haven't got that for you. Places of worship, religious. Are you pulling it up? Okay.
Yeah, all right. Let me know when to get to the go to the next page, but here's six, three.
Yes.
So we can also look at what's allowed in residential D districts while we're looking at CBD as well.
You can go to family. Or you go to next page?
Sure.
I'm more concerned about educational institution, that kind of benign.
Yeah, entertainment and recreation facilities, that would be a, that would be a big one for sure. Um, which is a yes by right.
I just don't want to put those people in that. You might be better off to keep that pre-existing non-conforming to protect them.
Officers clicks for health service. That's already what's pre-existing, so that's not a concern. Laboratory or research facility, that that could be a little spicy. Ready your television studio. Retail store.
Gas station is a special permit.
What about sale of automobiles, repair?
Sell of automobiles is a special permit. Automobile repairs is a special permit.
I mean, the one that sticks out to me is it sounds like they could practically put a nightclub there by right, uh, if I read the uh, use table correctly. Uh, entertainment venue.
So the question is, protect the the resident of Winton Street, are we better off to keep that office pre-existing non-conforming? Because then they couldn't change the use. It would have to either it would either, well, they really couldn't change the use. They'd have to go so it would always have to be a dental or a professional office type of thing, and they couldn't go to something, you know, without 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 a variance. And then have to show hardship. I just hate that to do this to do one thing and then really affect that a butter there.
I I tend to agree with that. I think we have a duty to protect that a butter as well.
Are they in a butter? I mean, are they just agreeing to this?
They they weren't notified because they they don't legally have to be, so. Unless the unless did Mr. Nagel reach out to them personally? He might have some more information on that.
No, because it wasn't within the uh, the change. Uh, but I did, you know, I did have uh, I met personally with the uh, one of the trustees for the uh, for the lot at issue, and it's a a well-established uh, dentist office. Um, and you know, that they were, they were concerned about the proposal, but they asked a lot of questions, which I answered to their satisfaction, and I mean, the chances that, you know, they're going to shut down their dentist uh, practice and and uh, go into the nightclub business seems a little far-fetched to me.
Sure, granted, but.
Mr. Nagel, could you uh, verbally tell us what their concerns were?
Or it could be a restaurant.
They they wanted to make sure that their vegetative buffer was preserved. And uh, we assured them that it would be.
This is the dental, right, not the the butter?
This was coin. This is coin, not the butter, but coin.
So if there's if there's no plans to make changes to that lot in in this theoretical proposal, then there's no harm in cutting it from the zoning changes there?
Well, I mean, this proposal has already been gone through the town council. That would be the that would be the issue.
It did be a time issue again, is that is that what you're saying?
I think we'd have to start over if we changed the the uh, configuration of the zoning change.
Okay.
I mean, I've that I've warmed up to the idea of extending the line, but I just, I I'm really concerned about the residency union street there, what could potentially happen there? Right now, it's pre-existing. Right now, it's pre-existing non-conforming, so that would either have to go back to a residential use or it would have to stay like a professional office or dental office or something like that, which is pretty benign to that neighborhood. But if you had a another business coming there as of right, that could, that could really be impactful to that house, a lot of eleven.
I mean, and beyond the 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 use, you know, that there's a whole street there that could be affected by a business right at that corner there, so it's not even just a lot of eleven.
So how does anyone want to proceed?
Personally speaking, I'm generally in favor of this, but I I believe it does need modifications.
You know, they came before a year ago, and I know that I voted no to this. And now that they are coming back with the adjustments that we most likely suggested a year ago, I would I know I would vote in favor. I wouldn't want to base my vote off of some fear that, you know, the dental office will turn into something that will be negative to the uh, community.
I'd say planning for the future isn't fear, it's practicality.
Yeah, I I just worry about, I think we're better, and this is a building department. Are we, my question is, is to protect a to protect the residence, that's a really nice property at number eleven. From a planning perspective and to protect them, are we better off to change it to CBD? Are we better off to leave a pre-existing non-conforming?
I don't think that's a question any of us can answer because it's the unknown.
Well, no, it's not unknown because right now we know they can do anything in CBD. Or if we leave it as is, they have to stay that use or convert to a conforming use, which is residential.
So I guess you have to decide from your perspective, is the existing non-conforming use better than what potentially could go there in CBD? I mean, I I can't set it up for you. You have to decide that for yourself.
In my opinion, the the existing non-conforming is 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 better. Personally.
I I don't see how non-conforming use is better. It, you know, we look at Bogarts. I'm going to pick on Bogarts because um, you know, I sat through those meetings and looked at the plans and looked at everything. You've got this huge building sitting on a poster stamp without any parking, and everyone thinks that's great. And, you know, we looked at Broad Street where there was adequate parking and all the other aspects that were asked for. And, you know, it got trashed, and here where we said a year ago, let's, you know, either we said a year ago, you can't put parking out back. And that was a mistake because now apparently you can. And we asked for changes and we came up with the changes, and now we're sitting here. Um, you know, CBD is meant for business and mixed use. And so I I understand about the lot eleven, but they sit next to a business right now. It's unlikely the business is going to change. And by putting in CBD, you actually have more control as under the zoning code for CBD than you do as a non-conforming.
I mean, Mr. Wood, my simple answer to to why non-conforming is less dangerous than than CBD is that the devil you know is better than the one you don't. We know it's there right now. We know what it could possibly become if they if they applied for a variance. Whereas it could be a multitude of things under CBD. I'm in favor of your proposal generally, but I think we have to, we have to do our due diligence and and, you know, protect the protect the resident here.
So Mr. Wood, I don't, I I I guess I'm confused because I don't, I don't think Bogarts was non-conforming. It was a mixed-use building in CBD. This 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 is what's.
The use wasn't, the use wasn't non-conforming, the 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 dimensions where the building was not conforming.
Yes, so my my concern is is that a year from now, if the dental office wanted to go out of here, there are a number of uses that could be used, that could be allowed as of right or a special permit that are not now, which protects the butter at eleven. It can remain an office building or it can go back to a residential structure, but at least if, you know, right, right now, right now, if you own parcel eleven, you know, that's in residential D. You know, they can't expand without a variance or a special permit. You know, they can't go to another use without a variance, or it has to be reverted back to a single or two-family home. They don't know that right now, next to them, we're considering allowing a number of uses as of right. In fact, we don't prohibit the number of commercial buildings. They could go build another commercial building in Central Business District right behind their existing building where that red, that red car is in their backyard. So it's a big, it's a big change to lot eleven, in my opinion. Right now, they can't do that. And I'm all for, you know, expanding the commercial zone, but I I just, I it's a big change to lot eleven for them not to to know that's happening. Huge, potential huge change.
Yeah, that's that's.
So if Jennifer and her staff re- redraws the lines to exclude Coyne's office, you'd be happy with everything else?
Yeah, and I'm wondering if we can even vote that way tonight and just can you guys even, does it even have to come back to us?
I don't know. I'm not a lawyer or siphon told. Um, you know, it sounds like it may be a significant change um, to the to the article. And uh, we'd probably have to come back for vote anyway.
I'd I'd be happy to do as Pat said, if if we have that option.
I'm not trying to, I'm not, I'm just I'm just thinking if I am lot eleven and I didn't know about this, now all of a sudden a commercial building was being built in my backyard because they they could put a driveway right next to that existing building and put another another building, put a storage building in the backyard of whatever they want, whatever's allowed back there. And I'm just concerned that lot eleven doesn't know this. Lot eleven thinks they're in residential D. Lot eleven knows they have to go through a certain process to change use and and would be removing all that.
Uh, could I ask you a question here? Um, if we took lot twelve out of the equation and if this uh, you know, joint board meeting voted for that, could it be sent to the town council in that form? Or would we be starting from square one?
I have to confer with the town attorney to see if that is a change that can be made without re-advertising or publicly doing another public hearing. And I won't know that until tomorrow. I can't reach him this evening.
Yeah. Because I, as far as the proponent is concerned, they'd be fine with taking lot twelve out of the equation to address the concerns that have been expressed. We're just, I'm just concerned about the the further delay in this. Um. You know, we want to, I would like to, you know, get out of this meeting some kind of an approval, even if it's not exactly what is being proposed here.
Yeah, I I have no wish, I have no intent to waste, uh, you know, your client's time. But uh, I I could not approve it as currently stands, but I'd be happy to approve it with with that change. Or, you know, recommend not approve, you know.
I just think leaving a pre-existing non-conforming, the use provides a lot more protection to lot eleven. So it's it's kind of a win-win. We don't lose any commercial development. It's it's a commercial building. But by having it be pre-existing non-conforming as protection to the lot, that be a butter at number eleven.
But I just go back to a point that was talked about a long time ago. Um, where where it seems to me this this conversation, which uh, is 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 good for me anyway, to to hear the both sides here is basically saying that um, in order to develop this slot, we have to change the zoning to do it, and that the variance seems to be out of the question. Or that is probably not going to happen. And my question is to anybody, if a variance isn't going to work, in other words, if it would not be approved, are we doing the same thing in a different format right now by changing the zoning?
No, because the parents need to show hardship.
I understand that, but we're then changing the zoning to allow for something that hardship would not allow. I I'm just somebody help, somebody help me with that.
Yep, so, um, go ahead, Shane.
I that's, I was just going to say, that's the purpose of a zoning change. Uh, you know, with rezoning any property or any group of properties, it it allows for new uses to be allowed and old uses to, um, you know, exist and be essentially grandfathered in. Um, but any changes to those new buildings or districts or uses creates issues where, you know, they, you know, they lose their grandfather status if an alteration is made.
So Shane, am I correct to assume that if we leave lot twelve as is residential D, pre-existing non-conforming commercial, it gives parcel eleven a lot more protection?
I I guess it would depend on what your definition of protection is. Uh, as is, you know, you're seeing what you're seeing. You know, it's not like they're going to make major alterations to the side or, you know, put a bunch of pavement in the rear. Um, it it's just a matter of the expectation of the town for what uses are going to be there after it's a dentist's office. Um, if the expectation is going to be uh, of residential D zone or the expectation is that CBD district expands that one additional parcel.
Right, yeah. Well, the other thing too is like I said, they could, they could essentially build if we change it another building right in the back of that house.
It 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 would be it would be difficult, but it's entirely possible.
Okay, thank you.
So how would everyone like to proceed?
I mean, it sounds like we have a nucleus of, you know, something everyone's kind of willing to to compromise on. It's just how do we actually go forward with that?
So if if we wanted to, Mr. DeBoeran and Mr. I mean, we could, if we voted no, we could say, but we'd be fine with it if lot twelve was removed and then the council could deal with it. How they want to deal with it, they can, they're excited. We could, i- if we wrote it, no, we could say, but we'd be fine with it if lot twelve was removed and then the council could deal with it. How they wanna deal with it, they can, they're excited.
Well, so that, that's what you'd have to do. You'd have to vote, you'd have to vote to not recommend, you know, the ordinance is submitted to you. Um, but then you could, um, make some, you know, statement that you would be. Likely to recommend if, um. Lot twelve, as shown in this plan, was removed from the zoning change and then. When it goes back to the council, um. Someone could make that amendment and then the attorney, town attorney could determine whether or not it has to come back for a full hearing.
Because, because, because if you look thirteen, fourteen, one, two, three and four. If they expand in the back, there's really no effect to anybody, right? But if twelve expands, there could be. A major effect to the residential. Component of Union Street. Major.
That's, that's my read on it.
So it's, uh, two different, so first you still have your public hearing open, both of you, um, it's also two. Committees that have to make recommendations, so CDC has to make a recommendation and the planning board has to make a recommendation, so. Either need to close the public hearing or.
I guess, I guess I'll, I'll get things wrong and I'll make a motion to close the, uh, planning board's public hearing.
Uh, could I just make one more comment before? Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, but, um. Just a comment that, you know, this, that yellow line was drawn. Uh, consistent with, or keeping in mind the, um, town's expression of. Any zoning change, you know, reconfiguration of the zoning district be as. Um, if you will, linear as possible. So, you know, if the, if the joint, uh, meeting here is, the direction is going well. You know, we're okay, but you gotta take out lot twelve, then that kind of goes against that. That, uh, premise that was. You know. Uh, directed the, the, uh, drawing of that yellow line.
Right, and I think that's why the black line is where it is, if you really think about it. Right? Because it, it protects. Union Street.
But it, it provides a severe, uh. You know, disadvantage for property owners, many of which. Those lots are pre-existing anyway, so, um. You know, the problems come up before the, um, this committee voted out a similar proposal. Um. And so I'm just pointing out that. You know, I designed this thing and, and the engineers designed this in a way that was consistent with the direction. That the town already took and the direction that, that I, that the town indicated we should go in. So by, by carving out a lot to address a single. You know, some perceived, uh, theoretical. Uh, problem down the road for a single lot owner. Seems to me to be, um. You know, uh, not seeing the forest through the trees, if you will, with all respect.
Isn't that why we're here to help a single lot owner?
I'd want the help if I was the single lot owner, that's for sure.
I mean, but that's, that's, that's the whole reason we're here is to help lot one, right? But to help lot one, we could be really hurting lot eleven.
Exactly, Mr. Chairman. Well, I mean, there was, there was public notices for the town council and for this meeting, so. Uh, no owner of lot eleven is, is here. And they've had adequate public notice. You know, I'm just pointing that out. I'm just pointing it out.
You know, you know, it's, it's tough to do this stuff on the fly. I wish we kind of had an analysis saying, you know, when you add lot twelve and here are the, here are the. Potential negative impacts, here are the potential benefits. And here's how it's gonna affect a lot eleven. And even though we're not supposed to, it'd be nice if we had notified lot eleven to say, hey. There's a discussion to make them a lot next to you commercial, which is gonna allow all these different uses now. You know, that's, that's a big investment for somebody at lot eleven.
Yeah, I agree. There's, there's a difference between putting out a nebulous public notice in newspapers that maybe twenty percent of the population reads and. Sending somebody a direct letter letting them, hey. Why they go massive changes.
You're all guessing that lot eleven actually cares. May, may, maybe they would love to have, uh, a nightclub next to them. I don't know.
I'd rather labor under that assumption and, and be wrong in that than. Do potentially irreparable harm to somebody's property.
If I may, I just, if I may, I mean, the, the whole idea of a public hearings to get input. And when, and since I've been on the board, the public hearings have been outstanding in my mind because we get. We get people saying things that we don't think about ourselves and we sometimes in discussing it. Come up with points as the chair has regarding a lot of eleven and, uh. It can move us in different directions and I, I entirely concur with the fact that a lot of eleven should be protected. Um, I'm still not sure I like the whole idea myself, but I'm, I'm just saying that. Um, protecting a lot eleven is a priority in my mind.
Um, I, I, I'm gonna run because it sounds like nothing's gonna be concluded tonight. You have, uh, you, uh, you have, um. Two other members on the, on the committee now, so they can take action. Close hearing and move it back.
Good night, Mr. Wood. Okay, I mean, I guess with that, I'll, I'll, I'll remake my motion to, uh, close the planning board public hearing.
Second advice, Steve.
Yep. Any discussion?
Um. Where are we?
Well, maybe this is just to close the public hearing.
Okay, no, I'm sorry. That's right. Yeah, no discussion.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yeah.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Uh, Peter, I know that you've, uh, joined our meeting, so, uh, uh, would you care to, uh, uh, sit in the chair?
Yeah, sir, I'll, I'll listen with chair. Um, do I hear a, um. A motion to close the public hearing on behalf of the CDC?
I would make a motion to close our meeting, yes.
I'll second that.
All right.
All in favor?
I'm a favor.
Hi, okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Close our hearing.
So, so I guess just with discussion now, and, uh, you know. I'm, I'm concerned about that lot eleven. And I don't. We're cha- we're changing that from residential D to. To. To CBD, which has many more uses that are allowed than residential D. And it directly abouts a residential house. With really no buffer.
M- Mr. Chair, I, I quickly drew up what it would look like if you removed. Twelve from there. So let me just bring that up. I've got, I, on the fly skills, don't worry. No, I'm kidding. It, it's, it was highlight, the highlight tool.
So I, I, I have a, I have a, I have a, I have an idea.
We'll tap that.
Are you still with us, Pat? You said you had an idea.
How about if we just moved the, how about if we just moved the line? See that, see the, see the, the, the solid yellow line at four, three and two? How about if we, how, how many feet, how many, how about if we move that line back like a hundred feet or something?
I think that, I think that's messier than just cutting lot twelve, to be honest.
Agreed.
Okay, so Mr. Brian, I'm sorry, do you want us to show that?
Oh, what, what a hundred foot would be?
I don't know, you said you had a drawing tape.
It, it should be up on the screen for you.
Yeah, I, I think I was sharing it. It's okay. And ju- and just for the case of this too, cause I know it was parcel based. For this small area right there, I just kept it along the original. Line, um, the existing zoning district, so.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think that's fine.
Well, the other thing too is if, if lot one is gonna expand in the back. It also, it also provides the buffer. Between the commercial zone and the residential zone to lot eleven in the backyard there.
Yep. Now, I think, I think what, I think this, this mock-up is complete, I could be totally on board for that personally.
So with the proponent?
My, my only concern here and. Is that we suggested something a long time ago and now we're changing that, so. As long as we're saying we're going to suggest this or approve this, if they make that change. And I'd be to go forward with it, I would be fine to be in agreement with the board, but. If we come back again and, uh, Mr. Nagel has to come back before us again and we. Suggest something else at that time, I, I wouldn't want to be. Or put them in that position. I, I just, fact that we're changing our decision, I understand that as we speak about this topic more. Uh, start to consider more, uh, components like. A lot eleven. But I, I don't wanna make them go before us. That many more times, that's.
If, um, i- i- if I may, it strikes me that, uh, we can. We can make a recommendation in principle, uh, tonight, uh, either the committee or the planning board. Um, but ultimately, until we actually act upon it, uh, it's nothing more than a. Uh, of our intention and it's a good faith intention. But we can't make a promise that, uh, that's, that's just not doable. So we can make a recommendation in good faith and on the basis of, uh, the lengthy discussion we've had this evening, but. Um, uh, you know, we don't know the unknowable and, you know, um. It, it, it's just not something we can give assurance to.
It has no, no impact, in fact.
Yeah, I mean, also that Mrs. Ross, I'd say, uh, I mean, maybe my memory's failing me here in my old age, but I certainly can't remember the exact verbiage that we told the, the applicant. The last time they came before the board and I can't guarantee this proposal meets everything we told them. Uh, well, yeah, I wouldn't be willing to make that assurance either. I'm, I'm saying I'm happy with this. And I'd, I'd be more than willing to vote in favor of it as it stands right now, but, uh. Yeah. The fact that they came before and were revised once does not guarantee them success in their subsequent endeavors.
We never saw this line before. We just asked them to go explore it, so.
Yep.
I just also would like to remind the planning board that their recommendation is non-binding to the council, so the council can make any decision that they choose to make.
Correct.
Yep.
So, so on that note, the, the way that this would have to read is that. We would deny what is before us tonight. With recommendations to the council. That it may be more of a favorable decision if they remove lot twelve, correct?
Yes, that's what I would suggest, but then the council could.
So that's how, that's how the mo- that's how the motion would be made, correct?
Yes.
Uh, I'll go ahead and make such a motion, uh, I'll.
That's what I was just gonna do.
Oh, oh, don't let me steal your, steal your thunder, Steve, go ahead.
I don't know, I was just gonna say that, uh, I'd like to make that motion that, that I just stated.
So, so Mr. Geller, your motion is to deny, but you'd be in favor if lot twelve was removed?
Well, it's not to deny, it's to not recommend.
Right, to not recommend what is proposed in front of us tonight. With a possible favorable outcome if they were to remove lot twelve from this proposal.
Well, so. Just to try to clean that up, so, so hoping it doesn't have to come back to us, right? Is that what we're hoping, Mr. Geller?
Oh, yeah, I guess there, there is a chance.
So hoping it doesn't come back to us, could we say, could we just say? And I, just, uh, just say that w- we would not make a favorable recommendation as is, but would support it if lot twelve was removed? Would that, would that?
That's fine too, yeah.
I'm hoping it doesn't have to come back, right?
Yeah, same. Uh, I guess I'll second Mr. Geller's motion then.
Were you okay with that, Mr. Geller? I didn't mean to change.
No, no, I, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Geller, second by Mr. McDonald. Any discussion? Or Ms. Ross?
No.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
I, uh, normally am against abstaining, but I'm gonna abstain on this one because. As much as I think the, uh, Mr. Geller's, uh, point is a valid point, there have been a number of things have been brought up in this discussion about. Some concerns and when you change the zoning, that's permanent and I still have. I have a result in my mind. I, I, I'm leaning towards what, what is being proposed, what Mr. Geller proposed. But I'm gonna abstain this time.
So who, where was that, Mr. McDonald?
I, I, I apologize, Shane, but can I amend? Is it too late to amend that motion? Uh, I, I just like to include the bit about receiving, uh. Confirmation of the correspondence between the applicant and the butter, uh, the, not the butters, but the involved parcels.
We can, we can just ask for that, correct?
Yeah, based on, well, based on just the conversation we're having right now, I, I don't know if a roll call vote has been made. I think this is a discussion on the motion. From my understanding.
Yeah, and, and you can't make a motion once, change the motion once a vote starts, so if the vote hasn't started, you can make an amendment, but.
That could be a second, separate motion.
It could be a separate second.
Yeah, I'd be happy to proceed that way then. Uh, so I'll vote yes to the current proposed motion.
Oh, oh, yes.
Okay, so, so Mr. Ross, you already voted yes earlier, correct?
No, I, I had said no discussion, no further discussion. I hadn't thought of it.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what I heard as well.
All right, why don't I, just to, just to be clean, I'll start over. So, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy? Mr. McDonald, Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Yourself and Astrid.
Oh, Ms. Ross?
Yes.
I'm about now.
Okay, do I hear a, uh. A similar motion on behalf of the CDC?
I would make a motion, uh, uh, to parallel the action, uh, taken by the planning board that, um. Um, we return to the council, no recommendation for, uh, approval by tonight's joint meeting. Uh, but with the appropriate change, uh, to be the removal of lot twelve. Um. That it is far more likely that a, um, a, uh, positive. Um, view would be taken of the, uh, of the ordinance.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Mr. Chase, your vote?
I vote yes.
I'll vote yes also.
You know, I know we don't typically do it, but. I would feel a lot more comfortable and I probably would have voted yes if we could somehow notify the, e- even with this. Lot, lot eleven has impacted whether we remove lot twelve or not, the, the greatest. I know it's not our practice, but I would feel a lot better and probably would have voted. Yes, if there was some way we could notify that, that director butter.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think that's, I think that's something that has to be done more in the council level though, unfortunately, unless we can do that in our own.
I don't know, you know, I, I, I still want lot twelve removed, but I would have felt a lot more comfortable that. Th- this whole zoning change affects, that's a really nice property there and that, that this whole zoning change affects that more than anybody. And I just, it'd be nice to be able to notify them if we could. I don't know if we can legally, it can, if we can, for the public hearing. For the public hearing, I'd feel a lot better about it. I, I. If they were here tonight and, and had some input, I, I, I know we posted online and stuff, but I would have felt a lot better voting yes.
If I had a guess, under our current rules and regs, we likely can't even legally notify them if we wanted to, so it would probably have to just, yeah, like I said, be changed at a legislative level. Uh, Mrs. DeBoeran, uh, you, I, how, how would I, how would I phrase the, uh, the accompanying motion about, uh. Receiving positive correspondence about the, um. Involved parcels?
I just make a motion to send a letter to the council requesting that they ask the proponent to send. Any correspondence he has regarding agreement from the. Additional property owners prior to their final decision on the zoning.
Thank you very much. I'll make the motion as described by Mrs. DeBoeran.
Do a second?
I'll second it.
Uh.
Oh, yes.
Say that again, Miss Ross?
I was voting yes.
Okay, so I'll, I'll take the role now, Miss Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Gemma?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
I would make a, a similar motion with respect to action by the Community Economic Development Committee, uh, that we, uh, also. Uh, anticipate receipt of the correspondence, um, through the town council.
Second that motion. Your vote?
And. You, uh, uh, your vote?
I'll vote yes.
Thank you, I vote yes.
Okay.
I'll pick five, under six minutes, right?
I think we're all set.
All right. I would, um, make a motion for adjournment at, uh, uh, for the Community Economic Development Committee.
I'll second that motion.
I vote yes in favor.
Although yes, eight oh five.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
Okay. Go self.
Do we have?
Good night.
Do we have more on the planning board side?
Yeah, I'll move to adjourn.
So, by Mr. McDonald, do we have a second?
Second.
By Mr., was it a Gemma?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Miss Ross?
I vote yes.
Can I cut out there for a sec, Ben?
I said I vote yes.
All right, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Gemma?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Good night, everyone.
All right, thanks. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Careful consideration of this matter. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just in time for your game, Steve.
Yeah.